Select Board Meeting, February 5th, 2019. In attendance, Chairman Deedy, Mr. Moguln, Mr. Fox, Mrs. Pendleton.
Good evening, how are you? Is that on? Huh? It's on. Everyone can hear me okay? Great. Thank you all for coming out. Just want to bit of housekeeping first. The police presence is for a penning ceremony coming up after we were in the house. To be clear, though, there was one or two people that came up here that were a little concerned about. Always start with a joke. Anyway, what we're going to do is we have an appointment at 5:30 from Citizens Restoring Commonwealth. We're then going to have a discussion regarding the topic that I'm pretty sure most of you are here for, okay? At the end of that discussion, we will open up the floor for any questions and public comment. We feel that the discussion is going to answer a lot of your questions. There will be adequate and ample time to take any and all public input at that time. Is everybody okay with that format?
Yes.
Does anyone have a huge problem with that format? Because just see the sheet. Okay. Okay. Mr. Deedy?
Right, so we'd like the folks from CRC.
We'll invite up the folks from CRC.
And I invited the folks from the Land Trust also.
And Franklin Land Trust. And I'm speaking because Mr. Deedy, for once, has laughed and joked. Thank me later.
Yeah, you can hear me, but it's just the swears. Have a seat. Tab, do you have any other, anyone else you'd like up?
Um, we're going to have Beth and Michelle speak as well.
Come on up.
Michelle? Put drinking over there.
I'll leave the open comments.
Oh, all right. All right.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Done, it's all yours.
That's all mine. Can you hear me? Is it working? Yes. Deborah Herr, Three Shore Road, and I'm also president of Citizens Restoring Commonwealth. I want to thank the Select Board for putting me on the agenda, others who are speaking, and to all who are attending this meeting. I know you'd rather be home eating dinner. I do appreciate the discussions that I've had with the Select Board. I then we've been, since that last meeting with CPC and the guidance on what should happen or could happen next, I'm representing Citizens Restoring Commonwealth. And Citizens Restoring Commonwealth voted to help save the North Pond project by donating previously. We are asking the Southwick Select Board to designate $500,000 from the town to conserve this North Pond property for the enjoyment of fall and the health of the lakes. CRC believes that this land is so important to the health of our lakes that we are announcing a matching fund up to $1,000 for donations that are sent to Southwick Post Office 651 with a notation that's for the North Pond land. We will match whatever funds are donated through that, through CRC. We don't have a huge budget, but we feel this is within our charter and so important that we'd like to donate again. So if people decide to donate directly to Franklin Land Trust, that's fine, it just won't be matched by CRC. This shows that other organizations, and it also shows the state, that the townspeople want this land buy to go through, and my husband and I will also be donating. And this is just a reminder that our town either gets the land or the money back. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Hi, Beth Thomas, 45 Miller Road. I've lived here almost 53 years, as my birthday is next week. I have been to many meetings regarding the Save the North Pond project, and by far the best was a question and answer with the Franklin Land Trust, sponsored by CRC, and I wish all of you could have been there. The highlights from that meeting were undeveloped land for wildlife, protection of the aquifer and wells for our drinking water, open space for all to enjoy hiking, picnicking, and shoreline as it was 100 years ago, and lastly, for our future generations' enjoyment. As I listened last Thursday, I was bothered by a few remarks from the committee. One member remarked that $5 million was too much money. 137 acres, divide that out, equals $36,496 an acre. The town's contribution is $1.5 million, if you approve the $500,000, equalling $10,948 per acre. Please try to buy an acre in Southwick for $10,000. I also heard seems like a lot of money for the benefit of very few. Truly, if the land is open for the use of all, many will benefit, especially the wildlife who do not have a voice or a vote or pay any taxes, but they have much worth. In reviewing CPC notes from a meeting last year, for every development dollar spent, it cost the town 17 bucks, whereas preservation land only costs 50 cents to maintain. Infrastructure and lake management cost millions, which is really too much money. You may think none of this matters, right up until you see an eagle pull a trout from the lake in its talons, or you're afraid to cook with our water because it's been contaminated, or you can't hear the whisper of leaves in the wind, and lastly, because your grandchild catches their first fish, and that's when it will matter. Much thanks to the people of Vision on the CPC and to the Select Board for your time, and I really hope you can overturn that decision. Thank you.
Okay. So realistically, you've done some homework?
I've tried to do as much homework as I possibly could. I've talked to Mr. Wally, I've talked to Rich, talked to Ben Coyle this afternoon. You know, we can put, can everybody hear me? Or should I use my...
You can hear them.
I got a call too, so bear with me.
We all know, sorry.
I was the liaison for the board to Franklin Land Trust, and I had discussions with Rich, who is the director of Franklin Land Trust, John Wally, who has been a leading mover of this project, and I've talked to the town attorney, Ben Coyle, this afternoon. And let me, let me just give a little background first, before I get to what I think I would suggest to the board. We started this several years ago, I think even before Franklin Land Trust got involved. We met in our conference room. Fishing game from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts was there, lake management, CPC, planning board, open space, and the Select Board. And we all agreed the North Pond project was the number-one project that the town should do. And we all agreed it was a lot of money, and we were going to give it our best shot. And I think a lot of people have put a lot of effort into this, and I think we have done a great job. Our, our state senator and state rep, working with Baker Administration and Secretary Beaton, came up with, and Fishing Game, came up with several million dollars. Franklin Land Trust got involved, they're, they're the ones that hold the purchase and sale agreement with Ms. Richards.
Denise Leclair Roberts.
Excuse me, Denise Leclair Roberts. So they undertook a fundraising that obviously we didn't meet, but let me just say this, we did have some positive things come out of there so far. Fishing game gave her $1 million. We've now preserved 80 acres out of that original 100 and...
147.
147 acres. And that 80 acres is now combined with several hundred acres of, with Fishing Game, along with the town of Suffield and the state of Connecticut, to preserve and help restore endangered bird species. So we have had some positive things come out of this, and we can't forget that. The owner wants a balance of $4 million. She's already gotten $1 million. And we have, our Franklin Land Trust has had discussions with her about taking less money. Mr. Wally was reaching out to her since he has been working with her since the beginning. And we still, I don't believe, have a firm answer from her on, on that issue.
Correct.
So, that being said, even if we came up with an additional half million dollars, we're still short, and correct me if I'm wrong, $1.2 million.
That's correct.
So I want everybody to understand that. My, my gut feeling is, and I'm not a wealthy person like, like she is, I certainly, in talking with Rich, we would take the money. We think it's a heck of an offer, especially with the remaining acreage left. To develop that parcel, Mr. Moguln can expand on this because he says 15 years' experience on the planning board, would take several years. There's a lot of environmental concerns, a lot of conservation issues, infernal pools. So I think it's a very good offer for her, but that's my opinion, and I think Rich's opinion too. But now what we're looking for is to have a special town meeting, and we have to do it rather quickly because the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if we're not going to go forward with the project, wants to take their money back to put towards some other conservation project somewhere in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So the issue is if the board or by petition, we have a special town meeting, we have to write an article, hopefully that would least impact the taxpayers of the town of Southwick. Because the reality is, we have limited dollars, and we have many other projects. I see Dick there, the alum treatment of the lakes. We have our DPW director here tonight that was talking about a bonding issue of several million dollars to update our roads. Our fire chief and our deputy fire chief are working on bringing Southwick into ALS, which is a very costly project. So there's other issues facing the town of Southwick. So we're a small community, limited dollars, and I think we all need to, in the back of our minds, appreciate that. And I'm not trying to take away from this project. I think it's a great project. We've been working very hard on this project. Franklin Land Trust has been working very hard. Save North Pond has been working very hard. CRC. So I think we're all in agreement, this is a great project, but how do we, we're at this point now where I'm going to say, we're going to throw a hail mary. Okay? So that, I think, in a nutshell, is where we're at. I've had discussions with the town attorney just a few minutes ago. He laid out some of his concerns about how the article was written and, and the funding mechanism. So we're going to have to get clarification from Department of Revenue if we do go forward with a special town meeting. And I think the timing of this is going to be very critical. We're going to have to get a commitment from Commonwealth Massachusetts not to take the money until after the town meeting is completed. Hopefully, we can get something from the property owner to say, yes, if you come up with this money, I'll take it. I think that would be a home run. Is it going to happen? I don't know, but that would be a home run. I think that's in a nutshell. What I would, going to suggest to the board is rather than doing a special town meeting by petition, that we do it, we draft the article, time it with the town moderator, time it with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, time it with Franklin Land Trust, and, and hopefully, by the time we get to the special town meeting, we'll have additional answers so that people can make an intelligent decision. Because it's a land acquisition, it's a two-thirds vote. It is not a simple majority, it's a two-thirds vote. And I know there's a lot of people here tonight that feel very strongly about it, but if this has a tax impact, there might be other people in the town of Southwick that aren't going to have that same strong feeling. So I'm just trying to be honest with people. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Moguln, anything? I think it's still on.
Russ, I think you've said it eloquently, and I think, I did a little research on my own as well, and I think this is the right way to go about it if we want to go to a special town meeting. I think the end result would be the same result as a citizen petition. If the town were to compose the warrant article and have it checked through council, okay, versus if we wait until a citizen petition is delivered to us, then it goes to town council, and then there's back and forth with the petitioner to make sure the warrant article's correct. The town also has, and it's by statute, 45 days to call a special town meeting in response to a citizen's petition. The timelines are shorter on a selectman's calling of a special. So if we're achieving the same thing, and we're all in agreement that that's the way to go, it seems that that's the more expedient, cost-effective, and, and just more efficient way of going about it. That was the only thing, from what I had read, that the timelines are shorter of a warrant article of, of the board's own motion. And if it achieves the same result, and, you know, I share your same concerns, you know, the, the other, you know, the other aspect of whether we can then, you know, talk about how, if there's ways to recover monies back in a, in a future CPC warrant article based on this, on this warrant article, it gets all complicated, but...
Doug, let me just comment on that really quickly.
Sure. Hold on. My discussions with... No, it's on, it's on. My discussions with town council, that would not be an option in his legal opinion.
Very well. So, so that is a key, so I think what, if I, if I may, I think what he's saying is that if, if we put forth a warrant article or citizen petition, doesn't matter, right? We've changed the bucket of where the money's going to come from, right? If we have an article or a citizen petition, doesn't matter, that's going to be $500,000 from the town budget. It is not going to be CPC money. The game's changed, right? That vote last week was a vote of an appointed commission that oversees the CPC funds, right? They, there was a 4-4 vote under Roberts' rules that motion fails. So now the, the game has changed in that, that $500,000 is, goes against the tax rate, essentially, right? Not from the special CPC assessment. So the warrant article that would, would be, would be to raise and appropriate $500,000 from available funds, which those are typical, for those that have been at specials and town meetings, that's your tax money. Okay?
I don't know if you got it through, but I did talk to the chairman of the CPC just before this meeting started. And as selectmen, we could talk to the chairman to see if they would revisit it, or, I don't have it in front of me, I believe I would need five members from the CPC to then bring it up that way. So you could, I'm not suggesting it, you could want them side by side. You could want, go after the CPC again, don't know where you're going to go with it, and the town side, and then either take one article away at that meeting. I'm not, I'm, just...
You turn it off right there.
You've got to breathe a little bit. Just breathe.
Loosen the tie.
It's okay, I'm just, we're talking about everything. No, no, I don't want to talk about it that way, but... No, I just meant, town coun, town council has advised me we can't do it that way.
There you go. Very fluid.
It would have, it's, again, it's a timing issue.
Right.
A timing issue. If, if, if we were to get the community preservation to reconsider, it'd have to be before actually scheduling a special town meeting.
Oh, before, before, okay.
So, so it's a timing issue. Well, it's not out. I mean, I think we have Senator Humison, Representative Bodega can talk to Secretary Beaton of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, make sure the money isn't going anywhere until we complete a town meeting, and if, if it's in the month of March, I think they'll be happy with that. So I think we do have a little leeway, but again, I just talked to Ben just a few minutes ago. Right. Thank you. Forget that idea. Okay.
It was a good idea.
No, well...
And, and I get it, I guess that, you know, CPC would have to post, meet, reconsider the application that...
Correct.
That failed on a 4-4 vote, cast another vote, pass it, send the warrant article, back to the selectmen to call a special. That's what, what would link in the timeline beyond the dates that we have in front of us right now.
Realistically, it would, yes.
It, it, it's problematic.
They couldn't call a special meeting, a CPC?
They could, but they still have to post, so you have 72, you know, days, you know, but a week is critical at this juncture, just if you look at the calendar of when you would call a special. So, and my only final thought is, you know, and I, Russ called attention to it, you know, even with the half a million dollars, rough math, 1.2 short. So either we're going to have to have like 400 golf tournaments, or, you know, the owner's going to have to, you know, take a burden handed, essentially. And, you know, I hope that that's the case. And I, I want to reiterate, you know, this board was in favor of the million dollars when Franklin Land Trust came back in front of us several weeks ago, prior to the CPC meeting. I'll speak for the chair because he can't, is, you know, he said, "Look, if it's a matter of a couple hundred thousand, $300,000 to get this project done, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can," right? Knowing we were going into the CPC vote, so we're, that's the reason why we're here, right? So the $500,000 didn't happen, but now we're back in front of us to try to make this project go around. So the support from this board, I think's been there all along. And you may disagree, but I, we were on the record, and it was a unanimous vote at town meeting from this board for the million bucks in the first place, and, you know, there was, you know, several million dollars all in between Fishing Game and the state and the town. So that's where we are.
And individuals.
And, you know, and, you know, fantastic contributions from individuals and matching contributions from other, other places, so...
So my understanding is, for a town meeting to work, we would need to do something tonight. Did you get the same? I mean, if we want, if we wanted to approach, I mean, we can set some sort of thing in motion tonight. What I would suggest is we reach out to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, firm that up.
Okay.
I would like to reach out to the Community Preservation Committee and explain the situation to them, to make sure, hopefully, we could get something from the property owner.
We will continue to try.
Okay. And I think, but I think we can get in motion tonight, but I'd hate to set a date, you know, because of what Attorney Coyle told me just a few minutes ago.
Okay.
You know, that would be my only concern, Mr. Chairman. Done. Okay. Well, we, we, we may as well, let's continue talking. So if, our next meeting is when?
19th.
The 19th. So if we were to do something then, we need two weeks. What do we need?
I think we need...
We need to post.
Need to post.
Before, with the two weeks.
We have one of the assistant town clerks here. Jessica. Jessica, how are you tonight? Good. Do we need two weeks to post?
If you were to vote tonight for a special town meeting, you would have to post either the 19th or the 20th to have a meeting either March 5th or 6th.
Okay.
So we have some...
We do have some time. So we would have to, for the, the Tuesday, the 19th, we would have to make a decision.
Correct.
So that gives us two weeks to get to the CPC.
Correct.
And try to do some legwork. Right. Do our legwork, talk to CPC, talk to Commonwealth of Massachusetts, talk to Franklin Land Trust, I, I keep forgetting to Rich, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
But it would be great if that land order, you know, because...
We feel the same way.
Right. And I know you feel exactly. I know Mr. Wally was reaching out also, so hopefully, somebody can give us some good news. And by doing the 19th, that would give us the meeting on the 5th of March.
Yeah, 5th. So we need to buy a little bit more time from the state.
Right. So that, that seems to work too, right? March, early March. I think you're going to make phone calls, and I'm going to make phone calls tomorrow to try to make sure that we have a clear understanding. I don't think that would be a problem. We've had a great relationship with the Baker-Polito Administration, and Secretary Beaton has been great, he's been out to the town, he's toured the area, and they've been very generous. So I, I don't think that would be a problem. But I will talk to Senator Humison and Representative Bodega tomorrow. So does that work for you, Deb?
Works for me as an individual, and...
No, understood, right. So either way, on the 19th, it's back in front of us.
Yes.
Either, hopefully, with CPC support, if it, if it can happen that quick, if they even want to listen to us. Who knows?
I know, you can't put pressure on it, so...
Oh, I can do whatever I want. I get in trouble all the time, so this isn't going to stop me. That's, that's where we have attorneys for. That's why you pay them a lot of money because of me. But, um, so that would give us a 19th, then we, we would have to make a drop-dead decision that night to move forward with this, to have the March 5th town meeting.
I, I just have a question about the communication with the CPC committee. Would you be anticipating asking them to have a special meeting in the next two weeks?
You'd have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there, is there, you know, the application can be resubmitted tomorrow morning, is that...
I don't think they need to. I think it would be a motion to reconsider the previous vote.
Okay, that's what I'm...
That's my opinion.
Okay.
And I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, but I believe it would be a motion to reconsider their previous vote.
And that is what I talked to Attorney Coyle about, and he agreed that, yes, they could reconsider.
I missed my call.
Russ, could you please repeat her question because we...
Sure. So, go ahead.
I was going to just give it to her.
I was just asking how the CPC would be, would be contacted, if it would be another meeting they'd have to set within the next two weeks, and whether they would just be, apparently, the reconsidering the application we already sent in, or whether we'd have to resubmit again. So it sounds like they could potentially reconsider the application which they already voted on.
That, that's my understanding, and from what we understand from the attorney. So just, let me just summarize for my own edification for everyone here, because I see a couple of hands, maybe I'm going to answer your question. Bear with me. So I think what you're hearing from this board here is, we're going to revisit this issue in two weeks, but you have a commitment from this board to call a special, and the article is going to be either one of two ways. It's either going to be a CPC warrant article or a selectman's motion for the 500 grand. Either one of those, we're going to be at the school auditorium on the 5th of March.
Well, I, I don't know if it's going to be the 5th of March.
Or right around the 5th of March.
Sometime in March.
In, in March.
Early March.
It's got to be early March. But that's, that's the commitment you're hearing from this board. So regardless, because irregardless is not a word, regardless of what happens with the CPC, we will have a warrant article in front of the town for an up and down vote. If it's a selectman's warrant article, it's a two-thirds vote at the special, so if you're out tonight, you're going to need to be out again for that special because it's a, a land acquisition under the town bylaw versus the CPC's a little bit different, I think. Did I summer, I don't know if there's a two-thirds vote or not, I don't know, it's irrelevant.
A two-thirds vote.
So did I answer, did, did I summarize what we just discussed?
Yes.
Okay. Is everyone in agreement with what you're hearing from us?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, hang on.
So, we're, we're...
Now is the time, if, if you have some questions, we'll be glad to take them. What I guess what we'd ask is if you could, come down here, grab a microphone, ask your question so everyone in the back can hear you as well, and if you could just state your name and address for the record. Do you want to do that? And Russ, Joe will be glad to give you his call right now.
Yeah.
You want to speak? You have a question?
I don't have a question.
You don't have a question? Okay. That's, that's fine. Yep, she's first, young lady right here is first. Yep. You just state your name and state your comment, you're more than welcome, the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm a communi, and I have a public comment on the North Pond project. I have, I am a 6th grade student at Patrimo School and a local Girl Scout. I am also a resident of Southwick. I live on North Pond. I, I would like to ask the commu, the committee to vote in favor of funding the Save North Pond project. From how, from what I have heard, I think we need some money. Some money, and I know this isn't a lot of money, and money, and money doesn't come easy, but I think it is money well spent. And girls, as we learn how to budget and choice the benefit, and benefit us and the community around us. Well, the choice to fund Save North Pond benefits me because my home's, my home stays the wild, the wildlife, and, and I like to see the wildlife walking home off the bus. And they stay awesome, and it's amazing. And benefit my community, and benefits our community, the, my, the land my best friends and neighbors enjoy goes untouched, untouched and remains beautiful. Please consider the benefit in our community. Thank you for allowing me to share with you. So, I'm Michelle Pratt, I live at 152 Berkshire Avenue, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the six generations of my family who are proud to call this town their home. From what I understand, the primary purpose of the CPC is to preserve the rural integrity of our town. I'm hoping that tonight's meeting, we all come into a positive partnership to be able to work together to really make that happen. I would be remiss, however, if I did not point out the fact that this town was not represented appropriately with regard to this project. It's no secret that the Finance Committee did not support this project at the May 2017 town meeting. However, the town overwhelmingly passed this project with majority. The people spoke. In the timeframe of when this project came to the CPC for vote, through the second vote that occurred this past Thursday, we've had five new members join the CPC, four of whom were appointed by the Select Board. The chairperson of the CPC is on the Finance Committee, and not anybody that I have spoken to about this project feels comfortable with that. In addition to this, there is his sister-in-law, his daughter-in-law, and his selectman's wife, close family friend of the chair, that are also on the board. If I'm wrong, please correct me. As new members who were coincidentally put onto this board, or came onto this board when the North Project came, came before them, these new members were the only ones to vote no on this project. This town knows it, and it's time that we say, "It's not okay." We're talking about a lake here, I don't want you to... I would say it's fishing from a pretty small pond, okay? So, we want to be given our chance to vote, and that was denied us at that meeting on Thursday night. And I don't believe a four-four tie means the project fails. I believe it warrants further discussion from the people who are representing these taxpayers of this town. That's our money. We love you. This town is made up of very intelligent, very driven and passionate people, and, guys, we really need you to support us. We're asking you to make this right. We're asking you to call a special town meeting to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars from the town to this project. I don't think it's fair to put anything contingent upon what Denise Mayer may not do. I don't know about anybody else in this room. I don't have a million dollars to go like, "Okay, well, I guess we can't do it." We do it. We fight. We fight as hard as we can till the last day we can do it. So, we want you to get that meeting together. We want it to happen. We want it to happen in the timeframe, so we don't lose six hundred thousand dollars from Fish and Game. Okay? Thank you very much.
Hi, Douglas King, One Eden Hill Lane. The only question I have, I'm in agreement totally, this project is near and dear to my heart. I probably spent more than two hundred days a year out there. It is a magnificent piece of property. I believe it's one of the few bodies of water that we have left that, that is ours. There's nothing else out in this town. Every other town around here at least has a body of water that they can call their own, where their kids can fish, that animals can go to, and you can have recreational time there. When you talked about that special meeting, Doug, is there any way that you can put the motion forward now, and then hash out all the stuff that you need, whether it's with the CPC or whatever, so that at least the ball is rolling now? So, I don't know if you can put that in motion now, put the paperwork forward, and then work out all the details otherwise, but that is such a quick timeline, and if we don't get things going now, and I know you have to have a meeting, and you have to have the vote, but if you could do that now instead of waiting two weeks, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Lamarche, I live at 27 Granville Road. My family has held land on North Pond since 1933. I am very angry. I feel that if the people who are working on this project were working in the private sector, they would no longer have a job. I expect you to do your job, and do it quickly, and do it right, because this is not right. Now that I hear of the nepotism going on, it makes me even more angry. Eagles flew over my wedding. I have to watch eagles eat there. Kings Beach used to be a great family place. People need public access to our lake. That is one of the few places left that the public can access the lakes. And I'd like to know how much the assessed value of the land is, and what does the word eminent domain mean in relation to this situation? Because certainly, in my mind, eminent domain is for taking of land for public use. There's nobody's house you're talking about taking. And does anyone have, have considered that, or have an opinion on that? And could you please hurry and do your jobs in a timely manner? People in the private sector have to work overtime, and I expect the same for my elected officials. Thank you.
I think Andrea Scully, 26 Castle Street, Southwick, Mass. I think we all know that there's a world crisis in terms of water. And I don't, I travel a lot, and I don't know of any place that I can drink water more safely than here in the town. And that's because of our aquifers and the lake over the aquifers. We need to protect our water supply at all costs. We had the opportunity to buy this land back when King sold it. The town turned it down because it cost too much money. I understand that. But this time, if it gets sold, it will probably be developed, and there won't be any second chance.
Chelsea Pat, 162 Berkshire Avenue, 152 Berkshire Avenue. Sorry, I'm new there. So, I was at the meeting on Thursday evening, and we were talking about the allen treatment that was brought up once again tonight, and from what I understand, the state would fund that. So, further, looking into the allen treatment and the conservation of the water itself, from my understanding, putting homes there, developing that area, will further deteriorate the lake, and would cause for much further money to be spent on the lake in the future, just intensifying this problem that is already immense in our town. So, thank you.
Ron Bodwin, 195 Morton Fine Road in Southwick here. I enjoy the lake. Lived in town for over thirty years, and, first of all, I'd like to applaud the selectmen for their direction that they're taking, and I really thank you very much for that. I attended the meeting to, the other night, and wasn't really that pleased to how it played out. There was a lot of experts that basically talked about the lake from treatments to the Franklin Land Trust, who's done so much work. They pointed out the fact that the town is looking to put, or could, put another well on the property, which, that's the importance of drinking water in the town. And I guess it's some of the only land in the area that they're interested to put another well on. So, again, that, you know, it's worth quite a bit of money. So, your timeframe and all, I understand, and I understand that Franklin Land Trust is gonna try to go back and to try to get a price. So, theoretically, they're gonna have a price. I would like to see the warrant read that the town would fund the balance over that price, to stop the fulling of our hole. And you said it would impact our taxes, so if I have to pay twenty, thirty, eighty dollars a year more, it wouldn't bother me to pay ninety, a hundred dollars or more. And I'll go for one more year for having my road repaired. So, that's what I would like to see them just finish it off. Thank you.
Some numbers, based on an agenda recently posted on the town internet. The Finance Committee always lists the various funds that are available to the town. Free cash. I don't know where they came up with that name. Cash is not free. Anyway, free cash. Two million forty-three thousand six hundred and seven dollars. Stabilization fund. Two million seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-five. This is an important fund to keep stable, it helps with our bond rating, and it takes a two-thirds vote to bring any money out of that fund. Reserve fund, one hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred dollars. So, as taxpayers, we have money. We have money, but we have to be careful how we spend it. If this gentleman is willing to give up his road repairs, I guess I'd be willing to give up a sidewalk or something like that. But North Pond land is very important.
Social media, you were talking on social media. I was getting over there.
My name is Bernadette Oliver, and I live on Griffin Road in West Southwick. I went to high school and lived on the lake my, most of my life. And I think it's agreed that everyone's in favor of this, and it's so important, being that there's three, that it's right over the aquifer, and we already have three wells drawing on that for Westfield, West Southfield, I'm sorry, not West Southfield, Westfield, Southwick, and West Springfield. My question is, is we are still, even if you do commit an additional five hundred thousand dollars, we're still short, but isn't that going to give us more bargaining power to go for more money from states and other, others, other funds? And the mention of the additional well, isn't that going to affect the budget for the water department to build another well? I mean, not having to purchase that land and use it for that? Wouldn't that be...
As far as whether the five hundred thousand was for additional funds from other sources, it's possible. We would certainly want to make sure that all our partners understood that the town was making a big stretch in, in going for that additional funding. Obviously, we're gonna let the landowner know that, too. As far as the well, we had at one point planned to have a site on the property for a while, but the water department at one point declined that offer. We actually had asked the water department at one point if they might come up with some additional funding to help with the project in exchange for getting a well site. They're contributing about twenty-five thousand towards an easement across the property for a water line, but at this point, they declined the idea of having a well site. I personally think it would be a nice thing to have in the town's pocket, but, I don't know.
And having the additional five hundred thousand dollars committed is going to also promote more private and fundraising activities, no?
It's possible. The tricky part of all this, as Russ has alluded to, is that it's a timing issue. If we weren't faced with the March first deadline, we have until June under our option agreement with the owner to continue to fund this right through June. But we're being told, come March, the state's gonna pull its funds. So, that's the tricky part here. And one of the hesitancies on the part of the landowner might be that she knows we have until June, and why are you trying to box me in and make a decision right now? Because I'm afraid if I do that, then there won't be any more fundraising, and that's just where it'll end. So, it's the, 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 the March first deadline is really what's kind of creating all of this angst at this point.
I would also say, as we've been under contract with the owner now for several years, we cannot extend our option with her another year. The funding, we've already gotten extensions, like the state has said, "Yes, we'll hold the six hundred thousand. If you can try again this year." There's a land grant that the town of Southwick is, had also, was awarded for four hundred, excuse me, four hundred thousand. That was also extended. So, we're at the end of our effort, end of June. So, we can't, we can't extend it another year to try and find that million. So, it's, this is, you know, like Russ said, the five hundred is a hail mary, whether other things appear in the next couple of weeks. But we wanted to get as close as possible to give her that, that, that last-ditch effort and hope to pressure, you know, that she will accept a lesser, a lesser amount than what we have.
And there, there was mention of her discussing with her accountant regarding the donation. Was there a result to that, or was that still out there?
We don't know those details now, but there would be, there could potentially be benefits to her to take less money.
So, she might donate to bring the price down, and therefore, reach us...
Potentially.
Potentially.
Well, thank you.
But she's not inclined at the moment.
My name is Dawn Scully, 26 Castle Street. I grew up in this town. I grew up on that lake. My grandfather harvested ice for New York City, because the water quality was so pure that they paid top dollar to get Southwick ice into the rich houses of New York City. My father and my mother have worked since the eighties in trying to save this lake. I remember when Kings Beach was sold, I think I was six, but I remember. And the town gave up the opportunity because of the cost. I understand money, but I think what you need to understand, by looking at this crowd, by listening to the people, that all other projects should go, that this is the time. You're out of time. This woman has been more than patient with us for decades. It is time, and I could be very crass, but my, my mother brought me up better, to say, "You need to act now. Put every other project on hold. The town wants this. It's an investment in this town's future."
You didn't answer my question. I gave you two. What is the assessed value, and what about the use of eminent domain? And I'd like to know the answer to those two questions.
I don't have those in front of me, ma'am.
That should be your job, to know that. Does anybody, a lawyer or anybody other, have thought about that, or know the answer to those two questions?
The second one, this board has that answer. I will get it for you tomorrow. I'm sorry.
I don't want it for me personally, I want it for everyone to know.
Well, the gentleman from the Westfield paper will get that answer. And if you buy the paper tomorrow, you'll be able to get the answer. That's the best I can do at six-thirty at night.
Well, fully adequate, in my opinion.
And I appreciate your thoughts. Anyone else? Chief Bishop? We don't need to have a budget meeting for you, because she just took care of your budget.
Haven't I went to school together?
Oh, he understands.
But we did.
Oh, he remembers now. Yeah. He was looking up your license plate while we were talking.
Any other thoughts?
Yes, sir.
We need to get everybody prepared for the special town meeting to be there to vote for that.
for that. I really need to get everybody else, get everybody here and your friends.
So you're asking, you'll get them out?
And just so you understand, even though we said the nineteenth, we would discuss this, behind the scenes, we are seeing the language that needs to be made and everything else. We're not going to go on the nineteenth. Oh, jeez, now what we do? We would have that prepared and ready. So, just so you understand, we're not going to wait and then say, oh, we need another two weeks. We don't. On the nineteenth, we would have everything ready to go for a town meeting. I think we're hoping with CPC would come around and that would make it a lot easier on the taxpayers. That's where, really where we're at. And if not, it's going to be the town money. So either way, it's the town money, right? But that's hopefully what we're thinking.
Well, there was written in the original town charter to protect this area, wasn't it? Did you mention that? It was on, in the original...
This is part of it. This is part of it. This lake has supported and provided for this town for years. And with the water issues, it's just, it should be of utmost importance. And thank you guys for all of your efforts and...
Yeah. Thank you.
And I can't let go an opportunity to actually have Dennis Clark agree with me on something because he's going to nod his head in about ten seconds, I promise. So there was talk about, if this thing doesn't happen, town meeting's going to happen, but if the purchase doesn't go through, that there'd be development proposed on, on this side. With my tenure on the planning board and Dennis's tenure involved in the town and on the Conservation Commission, how many grandchildren you got? None, right? Okay, his grandchildren will be retirement age by the time this got out of the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board for zoning approval. The cost of development these days... You are going to nod and agree with me for once, right? So, the, the, the cost of development for non-wet, non-vernal pools, a mile from a body of water, is almost insurmountable now. You, you've seen some development taking place in town, like the Greens and so on and so forth, very little wet area, flat, it's dry, it's not on a vernal pool or a lake. When you get into the complicated process between the state, the federal, the local, the, the cost becomes astronomical. And, and then you try to get through the conservation, and then you try to get through the planning board. And I would make that argument vehemently to the landowner, that that's a fact. You know, it's not a threat, it's just a fact. By the time they went through the Army Corps Engineer and the time they went through the state and all the MEPA filings and all, and I don't know involved, Dennis, I'm going to mess them up. All the, all the conservation filings and then started a planning board process, decades away from getting anything developed over there, more than a one-point-two-million-dollar cost, I guarantee it, just from what I know today. So I think that that should be a compelling argument to, to the landowner, if she's looking to get, you know, anyone can draw a subdivision on that land and say, this is the highest and best use, and that's the basis for an appraisal, and I get it, I understand that. But facts on the ground, when that starts getting in front of the state and everyone else, it's, it's an arduous process. Even, I know of land just over the border in Westfield that's just, it's flat, but it's a little wet. It was over a million dollars in just the design cost to get that to the point of filing with a planning board. It, it doesn't pay back.
But that would be recouped. Anyone who wanted to develop that land, they would be willing to make that investment. That would be recouped in a heartbeat when you start selling lakefront property at one-point-two million. I mean, I've seen some houses come up on the lake.
I understand.
The rebuttal on this, P D Fiori, person doing the Greens subdivision right now, found out about the CPC vote, he asked if he could get in touch with the owner of the property because he's interested. So, let me tell you, it's, it's a hot property.
And I thought he would agree with me. So anyway, I, you know, like I said, you have, you have the commitment of, of your Board of Selectmen for a special on, looks like the fifth of March. We're not quite sure what the warrant article's going to be yet, whether it's going to be our, our article in front of you, or it's going to be a CPC warrant article in front of you, but we will be meeting on EBS.
May I just ask one question about how the, who has to propose that the CPC have a special, have a meeting in the next few weeks?
It's our, it, so, we, we would...
So that we know for sure that the CPC is going to have a meeting?
My guess is, we're going to ask them to have a meeting, right? That's all we can do. They are an independent board.
Right.
Okay? We can't compel them to meet.
So they can say no?
They can say no, but what I'm telling you is that you have support from your Board of Selectmen at this juncture to be at a town meeting on, if they say no, go pound sand, we're going to have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar warrant article in front of you on March 5th. That would require a two-thirds vote.
Can petition signed by the people as well as what you're talking about voting currently?
Absolutely. And unfortunately...
Do you trust the process?
If, if, that's your prerogative, but like I mentioned earlier, and I'll state it briefly, is, we would then have to vet that petition, validate the signatures, go back to the attorney, get that thing put to proper form to come in front of a town meeting, and the Selectmen have forty-five days under the law to do that, which puts you outside the timeline. So even if we hustle, not that we would run out the clock, what I, what I put forth was, and, and feel free to be a pessimist, but we've committed to you here in front of everyone here and the cops, that we're going to have this in front of you on March 5th for five-hundred-thousand-dollar warrant article, whether it's CPC article or Board of Selectmen article. You want to go and do the citizen petition, you, we can do that, too, but I don't think you'll make the timelines that are required under the state and the Franklin Land Trust and the purchase and sale agreement that they have with Robbins, right?
Yes.
Robbins. Okay.
Mr. Mogul, I just have a question. Chris Pratt, 152 Berkshire, I'm on the CPC. And I'm just wondering if the request is going to be going to all of the members of the CPC to hold the vote, or is it just going to be going to the chair? Because that's concerning.
My understanding was, and I'm always wrong, but I, I thought it was to the chair or five members. I don't know how the heck I would get it to five members without coming through the chair. So I don't know the, the right answer.
Which one's the five members?
I'm sorry?
Which one's the five members?
I guess the more of an asking the, the people, right? I don't know. I will tomorrow, I can pronounce that. But I would have a select board as one, asking as a, as a group of three. So it's either going to be the chair or to, or, or I'm not sure if five members have to bring it up, if it works that way either, but you still have to call the meetings up. And who calls your meetings? The chairman?
Sometimes. What is the corner?
Understood. I don't know, so...
What is the corner for your meeting box?
Five. And how many are on your board? Nine? Okay. Stay tuned. So either way, we'll see it. You know, we're just hoping that we can... Sure, what's the town website? Or, once again, if you would just buy the Westfield newspaper. I found this year later, the one of them. I don't know if it's stock, but there's only a few papers left out there.
Pressure's on now.
So my question is, for the special town meeting, do you have to be there, or is there any way to vote if you do have to be there? Just forgive me for my lack of knowledge there. Okay, thanks.
Ma'am, can we have your name and address for the record? E her name and address for the record.
Your name and address for the record?
Molly Zepa, 13 Kimberly Drive.
Molly Zepa, 13 Kimberly 5.
Does anyone else want to be heard on this issue before we move on?
I have a clarification question.
He's coming. He's the hardest working Selectman out there tonight.
You're not going to talk to him?
I'm no, I'm trained here, though, I got this.
Dominique Nunez, 42 Lakeview Street. Is the CPC members post, like their names posted? Because I know the three of you are going to do due diligence and ask them, but are we allowed as community members to always ask them and names, numbers, just as the gentleman said, posting it? If we can have access to that through the Westfield Evening News, however you get it to us? Because I know there are members in here that are activists. My daughter's training to be one, so she'll definitely be calling. But, if you would just like that, how do we get that?
Sure. I, I think on the town website, everybody, every member is listed. I know I got a bunch of email this weekend, I tried to reply to everyone, and I think that mechanism is available for every board and commission in town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dennis Goldie, 25 Lakeview Street. What is our bond rating? Why can't we just bond this and pay, pay for it? We did that for the firehouse and for the school. Yeah, take it out on the installment plan.
Yes.
Sounds too easy.
Thank you. I don't have your answer tonight, of course. That's my understanding. Anyone else? We're going to move on with the rest of the meeting, and we'll see you guys, it sounds like, in two weeks. Thank you.
I didn't ask you this, but we'll still be doing this. I'm just going to convince yourself that we're going to come up with another five-hundred a month.
Thank you for coming out.
I know.
I did, I said, thank you. No, that's great. I'm done with it.
Are you a lawyer?
No, the lawyer's not here. I'm your elected Selectman as our C and A.
Oh, what is your name?
Doug Mogul. It's like my card?
No, I was just wondering why you guys haven't thought of eminent domain?
Oh, I laughed when you said it, I, I chuckled and said, yeah, no shit.
Why was it so funny about that thought?
Meaning, like, anyway. You know?
But it hasn't occurred to anybody before this? So how come you have a research?
Thanks for coming down. Thank you very much. I don't know, I don't have the right answer for you.
See, every question, everyone asks, you guys don't know. I don't understand why you don't know.
Because I, because... Well, we can, look, it's public comment, so people can ask us questions, we will get back to you with the information you asked for, so being directly to you.
So nobody knows the assessed value?
I could go on the website right now, but I wasn't going to go on the website while we're in the middle of a meeting to figure out.
But you have thought of eminent domain?
We just, it was discussed briefly, but I don't think, I don't...
And what was the outcome of that discussion?
I don't know. I mean, eminent domain is a last resort type of thing, because you're literally taking, and, and I'll tell you what, you just don't take it. Eminent domain is not a taking. You have to pay for it. And you pay fair market...
Yes, but that's why I asked, the assessed value.
Right. They have five appraisals at five million dollars. They have, so the value is established. So whether we buy it this way or we go for a taking by eminent domain and we get out of court in thirty years, figuring that out, we're going to end up owing her five million dollars. So it's the same difference. It really is.
Why can't we just have a bond for it?
It doesn't mean... If we can, we have the five hundred thousand dollars in the CPC, we even have the five hundred thousand dollars in free cash.
But I mean, all the extra money, why don't we just blow it on?
I guess, I guess you have to look at it and say, okay, the town, I'll be very honest with you, the town is into it for a million dollars.
Am I making enough lengthy conversations outside so we can move on?
Absolutely. We're going to take a two-minute recess.
Thank you.
The town's into it for a million. They're asking us to bear up with it.
Cindy, we're going to take a two-minute recess, could you shut this off?
We're back in session.
All right, folks, we're back in session. Folks, we're back in session, I'm probably not going to use this mic if that's okay. You guys are, anyone left for the North Pond that we want to talk to? No? Okay. This is family and friends, marriage that's coming up next. Wonderful. Okay. The gifts in the back? Oh, they didn't tell you, oh, it's a marriage. Marriage of the town for thirty-something years, hopefully. All right, folks.
All right, good evening, gentlemen. If you want to grab your package that was presented to you, if you look at the, there's a little pin in there with blue that represent the police budget. And I'm just going to go through the highlights real quick on the budget narrative, I'm not going to get into our Excel program part of it.
There's no money in here.
There's no money, yeah.
Let's check. Okay.
So really, I'm just going to go through the thing real quick. I did meet with Doug for a couple of hours today with my lieutenant, we went over the budget, he brought some concerns to us, and, and brought some other highlights to us also, so I think it was a very productive meeting that we had today.
Folks, you got to leave one door open, we can't have it closed for, for a session. Thank you. Police.
So right off the bat, I'm just going to really pertain to our budget narrative, Russ, which is to print out one of it there.
Somebody can't hear you.
Come on up, folks. Yeah, we could do that, absolutely. Thank you. He's always looking for the quick exit.
You're doing this.
Yes, sir, yeah, I mean, yeah. If you, I mean, if you want to refer back to the other one, really just the highlight, these are basically all the increases that we're looking at, you know, on the rest of it. The budget narrative.
The blue clip.
Blue in color. I tried to make this easier. See what I deal with, officers? Not what you guys are doing.
You didn't know we were colored blind, did you?
If you just pop that, let me read it to you.
Yeah, I, I'm under a lot of pressure.
You are. Just trying to make it easier and we'll get through it.
Thank you.
This is our budget narrative. See, right off the bat, full-time officers, I'm looking to increase that by fifty-four thousand dollars. That has to do with us having a reserve officer going into the academy in June 10th of this year, which would then go into next fiscal year of 2020.
And we would, you have a gentleman retiring down the road.
We have a person that reaches the age requirement in March of 2020, and, I mean, someone, I want someone in the academy prior to that, so when March comes, we have an officer ready to roll right into that position. Because as you know, we don't have a person, person ready to roll, we're paying overtime, replacing an officer for patrol shifts.
Understood.
And we've done this before.
Absolutely.
We're not reinventing the wheel.
No, sir.
Conga line, right?
Right.
And we only got a year for you, right?
Aren't you retiring in a year?
I'll have to ask Wes Scott.
Officer Wes Scott, that one, that one. There you go.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you, clarification.
Part-time records clerk, and as you know, as you all know, this budget wasn't my budget per se, as far as what I'm working with now, but the last administration did recommend, even in 2020, to give us to hire another full-time records clerk. There would be another records clerk at eighteen hours. I think that we can pull it off and reduce that by eight hours down to ten hours and just give that to our, our part-time records clerk that we have at this point in time. And I do agree with the last administration that, that, that job has increased enough where the responsibilities have increased, where eight, eight more hours, or ten more hours a week would meet the needs of what we have for that position.
Are we triggering benefits and everything else?
That I would have to refer to Carl. Yeah. I thought it was under twenty-eight, it would be twenty-eight.
I'm just wondering, I don't...
Right now, she gets partial. You know, I don't think she'll kick up the whole... Reserve training. As you know, we do have two, hopefully, we'll have two new reserves tonight if we get to that point. With it, we have Sergeant Banish who's running our FTO program for our reserves. When you put two new reserves on, it's not just them doing eight hours of mandatory training like the rest of our reserves. These people are coming fresh through the door. It's going to be a lot more hours that are going to be committed to them, and they're going to be needed to pay, you know, pay more. So if we weren't putting people on, the budget would probably remain the same, but because we're putting two new people on, it's going, you know, it's going to increase the reserve budget line item to pay them at that point in time. If you look back in history, when, when Officer Parks came on the job, she, she went real, you know, went real strong on her training, and we ended up being in the hole that year. And that was just with one officer, you know, at that point.
And how short, how short are you on reservists?
On reservists, we're down to six. Hopefully after tonight, we'll be to eight, and we're, and that's another aggressive thing that we're doing with our administration, is trying to build up that whole reserve. We've got a game plan.
Is there an end number?
Eleven is what we've had before.
Eleven, okay.
Jokingly, it was always based on how many extra weapons we had, is what it, it's always been the standard, you know?
Lockers, right?
Right. You know, so, so that's our, that's all plays into, we get these two into it, and again, that money's not going to grease for probably quite a while, because we're going to hopefully[1710.82] But we're gonna hopefully every year be putting at least two on a year to get them through and get them into our, our team, as you would say.
Understood.
Uh, community policing. When I look at budgets, I look at what it costs me to run a program. If you look at the number for RAD and for the community policing, it was budgeted before for $3,900. But if you really run it, and what the other administration did is they would ask people, officers, if they would take comp time, if they would drop off of shifts, okay? I'm going to still ask that to be done, but I look at budgets, I don't budget it with the, in my mindset, I don't budget it with asking them, because if it doesn't happen, then I'm canceling community policing academy, I'm canceling RAD program. This is what it would actually cost to run that program. We could have a surplus at the end of the year. If the officers, you know, are willing to drop down the shift, willing to take comp time. But even comp time, you're still liable for that money, which on the record. But that's what it costs to run two RAD classes and two, um, and a citizen police academy.
One CTA.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. At this point in time.
And related to the other CTA.
Yeah, we don't wanna go there.
Right.
And stop any point in time for any clarification on it? No, I'm just gonna move right along. Uh, the crossing guard, I look at that number too. If you look at that number, the person who works 2.75 hours a day, 180 days a year, it's just simple math, it comes out to $5,955. It was only budgeted at $3,700 before.
Right.
Maybe that person takes a sick day. If the person takes a sick day, we do assign a patrol officer to that unit or to that position and we're not paying that money. But again, I just look at budgets to make sure I have the budget in the account in case he doesn't take a sick day. This is how much it costs to put a crossing guard there every day.
Do we share that with, with the other towns, the crossing guards?
What do we say?
Do we share that with the other towns, the crossing guards? I know we take care of the, we take care of the officer and the school system.
It's out of our pocket.
It all is.
Right.
Well, we need to save that for our next picnic.
Not many Tallinn kids crossing the street at Powder Mill Road either.
No, understood.
Just saying.
Just saying. You never know, though.
All right, the next one, this is kind of a lengthy one. This has a lot to do with conversations with my secretary, Sue Anderson, explained to me the contracts that we have out there. Right off the bat, we're looking at an $840, 3% increase just based on how much, uh, this covers contracts, subscriptions, warranty coverages. So right off the bat, we're looking at that increase just based on the way that we've seen in the history of subscriptions coming up on a yearly basis. The TASER program, as you know, was already approved by the Finance Committee and yourselves. That's gonna become part of our contracts. Reliable for that for the next two years, Lieutenant, at $8,000? Yep, thank you. Um, over the next three years for that. The new field training software, that money's actually coming, is, is gonna be a subscription. Sergeant Banish is doing a fantastic job with our field training program. When an officer gets done at the end of his shift, we're looking at possibly half an hour to 45 minutes for the documentation he has to do by longhand. We can, with the software, it's all just checking off. So you ride with a, a reserve tonight, even a new full-time officer, you ride with them, you monitor things, you've gotta go back and write up a report. This is just checking off the boxes through the computer software. We buy the program and then it just becomes a subscription with any updates and anything after that, um, for that program. Uh, new Barracudas is essential software. This is something recommended by Officer Miles, it's just giving us more protection. As you know, in years past, we have been, we've been hit by the ransom, you know, thing out there, they wanted thousands of dollars from us. Luckily, we were able to shut it down. Assistance with Wally Computer, we were able to get all of our data back. This is just one more step or any attachments that comes into our police department. It goes into what's called a sandbox, that attachment, they're scanned at that point in time. If it's good and it's not an issue, it's, it can be opened at that point in time. If it's got issues, it's locked right down at that point in time. It's just another line of defense when it comes to our, our software protection for the, for the department. So again, we buy the software, then it just becomes a subscription after that with the updates. Every time a new scam comes out, they update it and they download it to our program at that point in time. The school safety software, basically that's already been in our budget for the past couple of years. This year, we're just asking that it be moved over into the contracts because now it's just gonna become a subscription. So the money's already there, we're just moving it from, I think it was under operations and we're just moving it into the contract line item.
Eric Collins, okay with that?
Excuse me?
Eric Collins, okay with that?
Yes, yes, yeah. It's more of a housekeeping type of thing. The money's still there, just transferring it over to the other. Uh, DFIBs is that Officer Wes Scott's done a great job by getting us another DFIB into our, into our fold. You're gonna see later, we're gonna ask to increase that by two more. As I've had discussions with the board before, one of my things, the police chief, things that worry about me are liability for our department and also giving all of our officers the same pieces of equipment that any officer has when it hits the street out there. So we are going to end up with having DFIBs on all of our police cruisers and that would, that would increase the subscription for each one of those DFIBs for the next couple of years. But you're also going to see the DFIB account going to be finished after next year for at least four years because we don't, they're all under warranty. So we're gonna have three years, we're just gonna put that account on hold and we won't be needing $2,000 or more, you know, a year to purchase any new ones. These are two, other items explained, that's been explained to me is that prior to this being just under contract, they were basically just, we, we asked for $1,000, we'll say, for computer equipment. Instead of just using that money on equipment as it was asked for, that money was used to pay for the subscriptions and those are the last three that are down here. So we're just asking for the, for that increase to be made in that area in the contract so it's not taken out of what the line item was supposed to be used for, which was to buy that equipment. It just becomes a subscription at that point in time. Dues, like anything else, anytime with dues, it is 5% yearly increase on dues. Uh, chief development training, as you can already see. Ah, I know, it's a killer. There's never enough in there. But as you can see, we're already 150% we've spent on the chief development planning. It was a conference that, you know, I went to and I think it brings back a lot of knowledge for myself and for the department.
Yeah, we see the photos.
Yes, you know, uh, so we've, you know, we were already 1.2,000, or 102,000, no, $1,200 over, out of budget on that. And again, I'm making a commitment to my command staff under me is that they're part of that, that chief development planning also. It isn't just for myself, I'm looking at my lieutenant, my senior officers, people that are gonna be coming up through the ranks to also spend that money on them, to develop them, to take over my position in six months?
Six months.
I wonder where Wes Scott says. TASER ammunition, it's always been there for $2,800. This is a housekeeping thing, we wanna take the TASER ammunition of $2,800, add it right straight into our $7,000 ammunition account that we have for weapons. Put it all into one, it becomes an account, just, uh, you know, same money, just adding it to the thing, so it's all just ammunition. So if one year we happen to use a lot of TASER ammunition, we can still backfill it with, you know, hopefully a surplus of weapons ammunition. Dive equipment, another area that Lieutenant has told me and Officer Wes Scott, who are strong members of the dive team, is that we have some masks, we have some equipment that have reached their certification level. This money's going to be used to bring them back up. Officer Wes Scott has been trained in being able to do it himself, so that's gonna save us a lot of money. He takes it, ships it out, they certify it. If we don't grab it this year, we lose the certification in that. So that's how much it would cost to increase this, to have that done.
Where are we with that? Does, does Fire Department also have a dive team?
No, but Lieutenant has been in correspondence with the deputy chief over there and the fire chief. It is something we are looking together as a combined group to see how we can expand that. The police department knows that we're never gonna get to the level where we'd be an emergency response type of dive team. But again, we think that we could pull our resources together and work as a team when it comes to recovery and even evidence recovery and stuff like that. It's something we're looking at as a, as a co, co-group.
Sure, thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, again, conference and travel, again, that goes along with, if you give me the money for the chief's development, it costs money to go to these conferences and travel, they kinda go one in hand, one in hand, hand in hand. RAD training is housekeeping. We have $2,500 in there, we've always had it for training. We have three, three, uh, we're gonna have three RAD officers trained. From that point in time, we wanna take that money, still keeping it RAD, but we wanna drop the training, we wanna use it for supplies to run those classes, um, for the future RAD class. Uh, cruiser maintenance increase, um, again, a lot of that is just from talking with Sergeant Kradka. There's a general increase every year when it comes to cruiser, uh, maintenance. Where, as you know, we're already, we're already used 95.8% this year, we got $864 left to make until June. This was a special year from what Sergeant Kradka told me. Uh, allegedly Paul Miles drove a cruiser into a puddle and it actually turned out to be a benefit for us, but it hurt in our maintenance. We were short a couple thousand dollars that we weren't expecting to pull out of that to make it. So I thank him for it because actually we got a very nice cruiser out of it with only like a $2,000, $3,000 in, you know, cost, but it came out of our, our maintenance budget.
Is he going back to training on how to drive a cruiser?
He's fine, yes, he's, yup.
Boat detail.
Boat detail, yeah.
I thought he was a U-boat commander.
Yeah. So that's where we've got that, and again...
Do we do a safety check on these vehicles? So like when Sergeant Banish comes in with a vehicle at the end of the day, do we check it for dings and dents or does it just get written off?
No, I, I think he, very, every day he goes over, Banish, right? Help me out here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Time flies. Okay, my mistake. Continue.
So that was cruiser maintenance. Uh, the next one, minor equipment, again, um, we're already at 157%. We can't govern when minor equipment breaks throughout the school, you know, the school year, you know, throughout the year, uh, school year. Computer supplies, again, speaking and talking to my computer administrator, Sergeant Miles, just a general increase. Unless you guys educate me, I've never seen things go down. You know, it's when it comes to supplies and stuff, usually there's an increase on, on those items. And he's requesting an extra $5,000, $500, you know, in that one. Ammunition, we're back to that one, just take the money from TASER, drop it into that one, we're good to go on that one. Weapons maintenance program. This is something that Officer Burt has done a fantastic job with. We spent some money out of a forge for a line, a line account that you are aware of. That looks like our rainy day system, but we still have to have that for backup for other things. We've gone now and purchased enough weapons where every cruiser is going to have a patrol rifle and a shotgun in it. So just, this goes along with my philosophy. When you guys helped us get the tasers, everybody has tasers. Every cruiser is now going to have those weapons. Every cruiser's going to have DFIBs. This is the next piece of what I want to do to protect, protect the community and help my officers be prepared out there. Is, um, he has started a program with forfeiture money of $3,000 for a maintenance program. We have weapons that are over 15 years old, okay, that need to be maintained. He was never given funding to do that more. A lot of it he did on his personal thing, he begged, borrowed and steals. So we're starting that process with forfeiture money for this year. He's telling me to maintain all these weapons. It's not like we're shooting these weapons every day, Doug joked about it, but we do intensive training with all the things. We're putting thousands of rounds through these, these weapons. Firing pins break, triggers break, other things that go along with maintaining it. So we're hoping that he would support us also continuing with that maintenance program and approving the $3,000 to keep that program up and going. What is the next one? $2,000 is that we have four retired Remington shotguns in-house. Uh, Officer Burridge, we're recommending we take those four Remington shotguns and we make them less than lethal. It just gives the officers another tool in their bag to be able to, to use before we have to go to lethal, lethal force. We've got the pepper spray, we've got the sticks, we've got the tasers. It just gives us one more option. And also helps us with those bear complaints, um, that are out there. A lethal, less than lethal shotgun can be used to, uh, send a bear on its way.
I had shorts on when I was checking the mail, it wasn't a bear.
Surprised you didn't take around. We did have a report on that.
Yeah.
So again, that would be where we take the money to do that, to make them less than lethal weapons. The cruisers at this point in time, we're looking for, as we've had for years and years, looking for two new cruisers to be brought on board. Um, the only thing different this year, and Tommy Kradka, Sergeant Kradka, is he here? Thank you, sir. Is if there's anything, if I'm misquoting myself, but obviously Tommy's told me this is a great year to do it because of what happened with Officer Miles. Again, not, not badly, but because it's positive for us. Tommy's, we're gonna use the car, unmarked car six a lot more than we did before. It's gonna be rotated through our, yeah, through our, through our thing, used a lot more. Tommy's telling me that's gonna keep our mileage down on the rest of our cruisers out there. Is my cruiser happens to be a 2014 cruiser. The mileage is only 55,000, I'm not complaining about that. But the problem being, we have a working lieutenant, like myself, and if you hear through the grapevine, you actually hear Lieutenant and I responding to domestic major accidents out there during the day. We have a lot of cruisers, but we also have a lot of the cruisers that are asked for road jobs or they're being used to road job. We have a cruiser assigned to the, to the court officer, just court need. We have a school resource officer that takes a cruiser. There's times that Lieutenant's responding to these domestics out there, responding in his own personal vehicle. What I would do at my point in time is take my cruiser, put it back into the, into the, into our, and keep it in-house and Lieutenant would have that one available to him at each day. Through this whole process, we still would, and I know if Carl was here tonight, he'd be thinking about the town pool. We still be going to have a cruiser that we still be turning over to you next year, uh, through this budget. We'd still be having another one to give into the town pool. So now they were taking everything away from you at that point in time. Computer equipment, again, increased by Sergeant Miles.
So you're not getting a new cruiser for yourself?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
You would get a new one?
Yup, yup. And the only thing I will tell you, the difference is, it won't be a mom and pop cruiser. This will be a, a police rated cruiser.
I've seen your dog. You need a mom and pop cruiser.
No, no, when I'm responding, then some people have rumors about my alleged driving skills out there. Um, it's scary, the extent of the cruiser that we have right now for the, is not a police cruiser, it's not a police rated cruiser. It's a, it's a regular off-the-line.
To take your car and put it into the pool, though?
Yup, 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 at that point in time.
It could be a court officer car.
The mine? No, I'm talking about, again, Lieutenant. But again, if he's not there...
Not good enough for you, but good enough for him.
Yeah, 'cause I think, yeah, we're trying, it's the best we can do. It's the best we can do at this point in time.
Sorry, sir.
Look, you wanna give us two?
Well, he's got a better skill set, I understand. Okay.
That's what we got there, gentlemen.
All right.
Capital line item, computer equipment increased by Officer Miles. Defibrillators, like I said, Officer Wes Scott put together a nice program. We buy these last two, they're good until 2025. We wouldn't have to be buying two every year until 2025. He's done a great job with keeping them under a warranty process. And he's telling me for four years, we just put that money on hold, so that's a cost increase there. Uh, capital line item, budget increase, uh, simple thing, but back in 2016, we did buy chairs to the department and we've had no chairs purchased for the department. Most of my patrol officers can tell you about the embarrassing is for them to bring a suspect or a victim into our patrol room and the chairs that are available at this point, just wear and tear, you know, that happens at that point in time. Joe, go ahead, now you're gonna say, give him a bench, give him a milk crate, you know, and...
My inner dairy's been closed for a while.
You got it. Next is school safety software, again, it's not an increase, we're just asking for that money to be transferred over into the, uh, contract line item. We put a new sergeant on, uh, a year ago, two years ago, uh, somewhere, I guess they got mixed, missed in the thing. We've never provided that new sergeant with a desk or a hutch to work out of. Each officer prior to this has a desk and a hutch setup, um, and we've never given that person that, you know...
He has a room for it.
Yeah, yup, in the garage, but it'll do. Two new, uh, patrol rifle, this is the other thing too that we've got going on with this, is a part of Officer Burt's program, is that we, we kind of, all the cruisers are going to be new, equipped with, with these firearms. His proposal, that each year we still buy a patrol rifle and shotgun, we take our old, we have patrol rifles that are 15 years old. Take one of those patrol rifles out of, out of service for patrol, use it into the training, uh, move it into a training, what we call a training backup, even at that point in time. Right now, if we go training and we take five or six weapons for, for training day, we're leaving cruisers without weapons at that point in time. So we're just trying to get to the point where we're starting to pull those weapons out of service, keep them for training so we're not putting thousands of rounds through our regular active patrol, you know, uh, weapons.
Okay.
Capital line item is the last one. Wi-Fi, again, in today's age, if you go anywhere, you know, Wi-Fi's become a mandatory, not mandatory, but it has become a great tool for law enforcement, for anybody who's running a business, okay? We have laptops, it gives us the ability that if we have an outside person come in and do some training, they just grab their laptop, off they go, they tie into our Wi-Fi. The most embarrassing part is when I hear from my officers, when it comes to sitting there with a victim and the victim's telling you there's some data on their phone and we've got no cover and they have to take them out into the front parking lot and hopefully it's not raining, to be able to tie into a cellular service at that point in time, to get that data off of their phone into their, into our police reports at that point in time. That's just another little kicker, but it has to do with the professionalism of our officers when they're dealing with people, you know, at that level. So we have, we have a price quote, and that's available in here too, you know, for $14,000 to, to have that, uh, out there. The next one is a, install a new phone system into our police department. The phone system, best we could find, that it's 16 to 17 years old. The phone system, best we could find, that it's 16 to 17 years old. The phones are no longer being stocked, the parts that they're getting for them, they're scavenging them off of old phones that they happen to have on the shelf in there, they can't get new replacement parts for them. We've been having failures within the system itself.
Is this a cloud thing like we did at...
Yes, sir. And the company that, the company that we are looking at, that we've got a quote from, is the same company that the town is using.
Yeah.
And speaking on behalf of the fire department, I know he brought it up at his budget meeting also, he's doing a proposal also for a new phone system, so it ties up. One little benefit it gives, and not that we're that lazy, but I can pick up the phone and just hit extension 645 and get right to Cindy. So we would be tied within the whole thing. If a phone call comes in by mistake to Cindy for the police department, she can just transfer it directly over to the police department. Questions, comments, or concerns about the business of the police department budget? Sir?
Yes, yes, you saw the meeting here tonight, and if, in fact, budgets might be tight.
Everything will change.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a priority list when we meet with the finance committee?
I thought that they thought on those, on the sheets on the side, our priority, and most of them, to be honest with you, most of them right now, at this point in time, are number ones, 'cause I think there are a lot of these areas that I'm discussing, are things that have just been passed on from passed on to passed on. So, yes, I do believe on the Excel sheet, I did in areas where indicators were supposed to do a priority, it had been prioritized.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Did they go?
Just wanted you to be prepared.
No, yes, sir. I'll be at that meeting.
Yeah, no, we appreciate it, and this is what this is about, it just gives us a, a quick, hey, guess what's coming your way, and...
Yeah. We'll go to the short one, next, real quick, animal control, that would be your yellow, little pin there.
Hold on. She'll flip the other pin back from this one. I'll drop this off, you can...
I really just went into the budget narrative again, make it a little bit quicker.
Yeah.
Okay. Joe?
Thank you, I'm ready.
Assistant ACO, this isn't really an assistant ACO, we had this position, and there was budget for $3,200. It had gone into, it had gone in by the prior administration, I'm trying to think how the hours were, but basically what it turns down to, and I wish Carl was here, is when her ACO went out on her medical leave for 15 to 16 weeks, we hired a person to replace her.
Yes.
Her rate of pay was started at $1,475. It had been budgeted at $13 before, but I think Carl believed that it would be better to encourage someone to take that position at $1,475. When Tracy returns, I don't want to lose that ACO floater. I can't, I have a hard time asking her to drop back to $13.
Right.
So the thing was, is that at $13, at $13 an hour, we had 41 days of coverage for Tracy when she's gone on vacation, gone to training, gone to court hearings, stuff like that, and she's out of the service. They still have those same amount of hours, I would need to increase that budget by $430 that comes down to.
That was a lot of work.
It is. Cruiser repairs and maintenance actually comes from Bobby Johnson, our maintenance coordinator, he says he'd like to see a 5% increase in the repairs and maintenance for the department. Uniforms, if we get this, if we go along, this ACO hasn't, the ACO floater, it's never been given the, them funding to make that sort of increase to help that person out. Salaries, there's no increase or decrease in that line item. This is a housekeeping thing, right now, it's a, it's called assistant fees, it's under operations. That should basically be moved up into salaries. If a part-time, part-time ACO is called out in the middle of the night, they get a $30 stipend.
Right.
So I don't, never understood why it's under operations, it should be up under salary. I've had the discussion with the accounting department, and they agree, they're the ones that actually highlighted it, saying this should be up under the salary account.
Okay.
Office supplies, just another general increase for office supplies over the years. Maintenance supplies, again, Bobby Johnson recommending 5% maintenance supplies at that point in time. New capital line item, washer and dryer. As you know, that we have brought at West Springfield into the fold, that'll be renting our facility down there at the ACO. Between Agwam and West Springfield, we're looking at $27,000 that we're doing just for our kennel use. With that, it's going to be more, more use of our washer and dryers. The ones that were purchased before were never high capacity or were they commercial. And also, lieutenant has worked out a deal with them down there, that they allow us to use our, cleaning of our cell blankets, so instead of paying an outside service that we've done, we've taken responsibility, just having those washed down there, these commercial washer and dryer. So for capital item, we'll be looking for a washer and dryer. And again, because of the part of bringing West Springfield in, we want to put a scanner, a laptop, and a computer in a separate room, so when they come in, they're logging their dogs in, doing what they have to do, paper trail, they're not in Tracy's office bothering, bothering, but interfering with the services of our ACO and our animal control.
And there's room for that.
Yes, sir. Questions, comments, or concerns?
No, that's evolving into quite a little operation over there.
It is, it is. I have brought you one extra piece of paperwork. I had submitted a report to you that was done by an outside agency back in 2017 on the dispatch center. I had just given you a small blurb about the justification for a dispatch...
What color paper?
Oh, you're only down to one. There's only one left, so I'm gonna assume you can figure that one out.
I didn't test well.
So, that one, that one is actually the full report from the dispatch, from that outside agency. I had sent it to Doug, and met with him, gave him the full report, he said it really opened his eyes to some areas that we were lacking in the dispatch unit itself, besides just the supervisor that we're asking for at that point in time.
And you're working this with Chief Anderson?
Absolutely, yep. A lot of these recommendations, and part of this package too, you look into it, there was a letter of support from Chief Anderson for a dispatch supervisor. And we go right into that one right off the bat. What it comes down to is, again, it's in your side notes, it's in, it's in your package there too, but basically, we spent over $24,000 in studying our dispatch center. 10 years ago, 15 years ago, there's $10,000 spent on a police department management report. It indicated we needed dispatch supervisor. They came through years later, they did a fire department management thing. What do you think they said? We need a dispatch supervisor. I myself went before the town, and Russ, I think you're on the board, we approved at one point in time, I believe it was $35,000 for a dispatch supervisor at town meeting. That money was then transferred over to a part-time fire chief, and his responsibility was to become the dispatch supervisor. Don't know if it ever happened, not speaking badly about it, but it didn't happen, in my opinion. We then have this last management study done, all of this is nice and new and fresh, she even indicates that was a $4,000 thing. She's indicating this is the needs that we have for within our...
Dispatch supervisor.
And again, the whole world of just these dispatchers picking up the phone, answering it and sending officers and firefighters somewhere, it's changed so much. The EMD's responsibilities that we have, that we're putting these single-point dispatchers through is phenomenal. We need someone to take over that position, train them, get the grants, create policies and procedures, and all that stuff is written within that report that's there. So I'd be, myself, with the support of the fire chief, we are asking for a position to be created within that unit where they would be a dispatcher. They still answer to the fire chief, they still answer to the police chief, but they be responsible for the daily runnings of, of the management of that unit. I'm not looking at pulling them out completely, three days admin, one day on the open shift, we have two days a week that's an open shift. I want to be getting rid of all my part timers, because if we did that, and it comes to backfilling shifts, we're cutting down on numbers before we have to start ordering dispatchers in. So I would still say hypothetically, one of the part timers might become a full-time position, we still keep the other two part timers, they work one day, each other, each, one works one week, one works the next week. They still stay in the game, and they stay fresh on doing their dispatching then. So it kind of went off.
Money's allocated a while ago, I thought, for a part-time dispatcher, and was it ever, it was never really filled?
It was never put together and never completed. It was, we're at three, we used to have four, it was brought forward, we thought it was gonna be done, and it never did get accomplished.
Years ago.
So, I want to be looking at adding more, if anything, we just keep those two, and I still like to have that supervisor still work, hands dirty, doing dispatching, so he knows the new trends that's coming off, so when he's supervising, he's got the hands-on of what they're still going through when new EMD stuff comes through there. Dispatch salaries, again, I'm looking at this thing, this, I look at what my sergeants get paid on the police side, this isn't up to their rate of pay, but again, responsibilities, my sergeants aren't, they wouldn't have, they don't have the same, they have patrol responsibilities out on the street. The supervisor's gonna be in charge of training, gonna be in charge of writing grant, the EMD, quality assurance, so it's close to the sergeant's pay, but it's not, but the same, but I think the responsibility for that one person is going to be very important. So that's, that's where basing the pay at that point. Salary increase, additional training, if you give me the supervisor, person's gonna have additional training, so there'll be an increase there. Operations, just again, hiring a new person, more uniform, you know, cost for an increase there. Conference and travel, get the supervisor, he's gonna, he or she's going to have to go on conference and travel. And the thing is, I want to be looking for a supervisor from the outside. I'd be saying, recommend, we take one from in-house, bring them up, and then move a part timer into that full-time position.
Very quickly.
Yes, sir.
I would reach out to Labor Council.
Yes, I've already spoke to Carl about that, how we're gonna put that whole thing through.
And the salary.
Yes, sir, yeah.
You know, because he knows, he deals with many other communities, and we can see where we are, rather than have a problem right from the beginning.
You got it, yeah. Yeah, 'cause Carl, I've been speaking, that's what he recommended also, we'll talk more about it. So he just said, but he said, again, which input from Carl, said he had some dollar amount to start the process to put in there.
Yeah.
Dispatch training, again, that would increase because of our new dispatch supervisor. And again, minor equipment, again, we can't tell how much it costs throughout the year, but the minor equipment, right, staplers, right, electronic one, time clock, it's just a cost increase that we can't really prevent from happening. In a nutshell.
Well, they need to add up.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. And the other, and again, what kind of goes in twofold, Doug brought it forward, there has been talk about regionalization, it's still out there, we just received a letter from Westfield today that they're looking to see if we would do a new MOU with them.
Whatever, the last one.
The last one, that person, well, actually, she stepped down, but actually, the way it is right now, the way grants are done, you put your paperwork in for that grant. They were denied that first initial grant.
Okay, okay.
They were denied, because we're so low on the total, when they're looking at regionalizing, they're looking at communities six and seven, where they can bring six or seven departments together. What Westfield's looking at is us and East Hampton at this point in time, okay? So we're kind of low, so they got denied on it. They want to readdress it again. She told me to go through the whole, probably takes one year, just to see if we even could be part of it. If that happens, then she says two years of studying, and then she said boots on the ground, we'd be looking at a four to five-year window before we'd even do it. It puts us in a very tough spot, because do we just put on hold and not put supervisors in that position, you know, and hope that we, not hope, no, to go to the regionalization? Or Russi brought it up at his meeting with you, I'm bringing the same thing up. This year, we're going out to, not to bid, but we're gonna be looking for cost estimates replacing our old radio council system, that's over 25 years old. I know we've got a lot on our plate and stuff, but do we put that stuff on hold, the way to see if we go to regionalization? I say we can't. We've got to move forward and take it from there, but it's still all negotiable. Good to go?
Yeah, we're speechless.
Okay. You're saying I wish I was, huh? That's what I got.
No, 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 you're doing fine.
You did a good job.
Thank you, sir.
You got it.
PVPC Jim Maisick.
That's the 5:55 appointment. Right on time.
Who's up to reschedule?
No, we can say a little thing, if things are not necessarily in order, you're on time.
Come on, Jim, right up, right up here.
This is a public hearing for a lawyer application.
Oh, yes.
I have this certain, I'm gonna use yours too, outside, give me the copy for that. By any means, it's quite a public hearing.
You're not gonna win a car, we just need your signatures, this is, there are people in the room.
You can do whatever you want.
Whatever you want, he said.
Right.
Have at it.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, I need to read this. All right, those are revised.
Don't worry.
Oh, read the revised one? I'm gonna still read this, the public, okay? All right. The Southwick Board of Selectmen will conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, February 5th, 2019, at, or around 5:55 PM at the Southwick Town Office Building, 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. The public is encouraged to attend this meeting to discuss the proposed FY19 application to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. The application will be filed no later than March 1st, 2019. The town is seeking input on community needs and the proposed project to be included in the grant application. Projects currently being discussed include infrastructure, improvements on Bungalow Street, and/or townwide housing rehabilitation. The Southwick Town Office Building is handicap accessible. Persons who require special accommodations should contact the town at least one week prior to the hearing, day at 413-569-5995 for further information. PVPC Deputy Director James M. Maisick at 413-781-6045, or at jimmymazick@pvpc.org.
You got it.
Sir, how are you this evening?
Good.
So any motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, again, just a reminder, please sign the sign-in sheet. Applications actually are gonna be due March 8th, they've been back, moved back a week because of some deadlines, which means issues DHD had. So the town has applied for these monies before, over the years, most recently, back two years ago, improvements on Veteran Street, housing rehab, and also a van was purchased for the food pantry, for food delivery in both Granville and in Southwick.
Right.
This year's application, really looking at two things, let me just back up for a second. The town can receive up to $1.35 million over a two-year period. The max in one funding year is $800,000. So a discussion, a preliminary discussion with Carl Steinhardt, and then with your chair, and also some background discussions, again, with your DPW director, wanted to really focus again on infrastructure improvements around the lakes, which have done in the past, and also housing rehab. So felt that best to maximize, looking at a design project on one of the, a street that would qualify under the, under the program guidelines, and that being Bungalow Street.
Yeah.
72% low mom income, and, and then do housing rehab, we have 21 people on the waiting list for Southwick residents. Get the design completed this year, get some housing done, and next year, apply for the balance of funds, $800,000, and max you can apply for, solely for construction for Bungalow Street. We'll have bid-ready plans and specs. So that's what the proposal is for this year, is to apply for monies for the design, for infrastructure improvements on Bungalow Street, looking at drainage, probably leaching catch basin similar, was on a Veteran Street. Water line, again, a water line is, I think, 40, 50 years old, asbestos cement, it definitely needs repair, water quality's not good, pressure's not good, and also looking at potentially sewer line down Veteran Street as well. So that design will be done, housing rehab, and then move for the following year for the construction work. So that's what's on the table for, year, for any kind of discussion, and then for any action by the board.
All right. Anything for me?
Nope.
Nope.
I mean, Jim has been very successful, and has helped the town of Southwick immensely, Painter Valley Planning Commission, and they've always had a good recommendation.
When are you retiring?
Not soon enough.
Okay.
Next year. This is the last time you'll see me. Probably not, but I'm just...
No, understood.
For the hearing, for a hearing.
Yes, understood. Any questions from the public in regards to this? Mr. Bishop? Other? Charlie, so you need to make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for the chair to sign?
There are two suggested motions, I need to close the hearing, so if you could actually act on those suggested motions, which I believe you have those, and if not, I can give you another one.
It's easier if you give it to me. All right. So you want both of these?
Correct.
All right, you can read them. Just decide.
Authorization to submit the proposed fiscal 2019 Southwick Community Development Fund Grant Application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development in an amount not to exceed $550,000, as detailed in the public hearing, and to include funding for a housing rehabilitation program and funding for Bungalow Street Infrastructure Design Project. So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Second motion, authorization for execution and submission of all required forms, documents, letters, and authorization pertaining to the proposed fiscal 2019 Southwick Community Development Fund Grant Application. So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. Anything for us to sign?
Not tonight. Probably in about two or so weeks.
Have a lovely evening, thanks for waiting.
Yeah, no problem. Great.
All the cops are here, so you can make haste getting out of town.
Are they still signing that stuff?
They're still signing it. Still passing it around.
Can't go yet.
And you gotta pass it up front here.
Yeah, we still gotta sign it. All right, Rick Johnson, 2019 Wick.
May I submit that we have moved here that you do the penning first?
That's up to Ricky.
Okay, whatever you want to do, Chief.
Well, if you don't mind, if they don't...
Only because you have so many people that have been waiting for that.
But we never get anybody at meetings, this has been such a great experience for us.
We weren't gonna put out a tips jar.
Yeah, we were thinking.
You have 30 seconds.
I want to go right now.
Oh, all right.
We're taking all the dinner afterwards, so if you don't mind, well, Russ, or you, who did I call? Russ? Doug?
Mr. Moglen, on my behalf, could you do this? I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, Mr. Johnson, thank you.
My pleasure. I'm thinking of a witty retort, I'll have it tomorrow morning.
Give me a call.
It'll be in the Westfield paper for twenty-five cents.
Doesn't that pay for like a buck now?
Seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five cents. There you go. Words are repetitive. Ah.
You might wanna bring your pound a little bit, though.
I know, I'm short.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me? Without this?
Yep.
Better. We haven't done this for a while, Keith. No, we haven't had a reserve penning in a while.
Uh, my years on the job, I don't think it's ever been done, sir.
So that would be a while.
Yes, sir.
How long you been on the job?
Thirty-four years.
Thirty-four years.
That's it?
So you got another two, three weeks, right?
Yeah.
I have Mike before the meeting tonight. So we're, we are pleased to increase the ranks of reserves, and, uh, according to the very detailed script that I've been given, that I must appear to at all times, uh, I'm going to introduce the two reservists, 'cause they're definitely not until they're sworn in.
You got it, sir.
And I have to make sure that Jessica Menzone is here to observe all of these festivities. Okay, so first, uh, we're going alphabetically. Mike Gerard. Mike Gerard was born and raised in West Springfield, and graduated from West Springfield High School in nineteen ninety-seven. In January of ninety-eight, he was hired as a special police officer to the town of West Springfield. He attended the Massachusetts Criminal Justice Training Academy in Agawam, graduating in March of nineteen ninety-eight. In two thousand and two, he was promoted to the position of Special Police Sergeant, and served the town of West Springfield until two thousand and ten. In two thousand and two, he was also appointed as a police officer in the town of Huntington. Oh, here's where it gets good, though. In two thousand and ten, Mike was appointed as a reserve officer here in Southwick, where he served until two thousand and fourteen, but unfortunately he had to take leave for family illness and other applications. Mike comes from a long history of family and law enforcement. His great-grandfather and grandfather served in the Springfield Police Department, and his father recently retired from the West Springfield Police Department after thirty-plus years. Now I'm supposed to introduce?
Officer Mike Gerard.
Officer Michael Gerard. She was born in Concord, New Hampshire, but moved to Southwick when she entered the second grade. In high school senior year, she did an internship with the Southwick Police Department. She graduated from Southwick High School in June of two thousand and fifteen. God, I'm old.
Yeah.
That's crazy. Where's Parker? He is here. They didn't let you have a real gun now, right? You're old enough now.
With supervision.
Well, that's, that's nothing to do with his age, right? Obtained Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice in December of two thousand and seventeen from HCC, and she entered the Municipal Police Reserve Academy in March two thousand and eighteen, and graduated in, in October of two thousand and eighteen. May I introduce Officer Kristen Reckenberger?
He doesn't like it. He's not a hugger.
I thought he liked it while he walks on the beach.
Now I get to call up Jessica Menzone, I remember this guy, okay, like that address, who will conduct the swearing-in. Now I'd like to call up Lieutenant Landis.
Just turn the facial look down. She's not gonna do it.
He didn't put enough lines on the floor there.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge. I agree with my character and the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve.
Now I'm supposed to call up Chief Bishop.
Short.
It says, two short words, recognizing that it's after seven o'clock.
I don't, I'm gonna, I've got pizza Rome ready. First of all, the, the second part of the, the officer, that is something I found out that has been done by international police chiefs across the country, and that's the oath to the officer. One thing to be sworn in by the community is something we're adding elsewhere officers in the future, is an oath that they're taking at that point in time, for the badge they are honored to wear. Before I get into my quick thanks to those two officers, I'd like to thank the support of my fellow officers that are here tonight, it means a lot for you guys to be here this late at night and come out, paying respect for these new, and Assistant ACO, and it's you sitting over there, for all of you to be here tonight shows a lot of support for these new officers that are coming on board, and it means a lot to me that you're all here. First of all, congratulations on this next step in your police career. I would like to say that I'm proud and honored to have both of you joining the ranks of the Southwick Police Department. I have faith, I have faith in both of you that you will be of great service to the town of Southwick, and that you'll continue to make me and the other members of the department proud. For just a quick moment, I would like to speak about the oath of an officer flag that you just took. I will be giving each of you a copy of that oath, and I'll be asking each of you to put it away somewhere, and over the years, please take it out and read those words again, and remember why you wanted the honor of wearing the Southwick Police Badge. Very few possessions, professions ask you to take an oath to serve and to use words like honor, integrity, public trust, courage, accountable, uphold the Constitution for your community and the agency you serve, well, your profession does. So I'm asking you to always try to remember this day and the oath that you took and never forget. Now I pray for your safety and that you'll always return unharmed, both physically and mentally, to your loved ones and to your shift. God bless you, and again, thank you for the service, this great community, and this great department. Congratulations. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. We're not going.
Congratulations. Gentlemen, ladies, tonight? You get a picture, Greg? You get a picture of this?
I did.
Okay.
You can buy it in the Westfield paper tomorrow.
We buy it.
We are selling it.
Yeah, gave you a couple plugs tonight.
Test the experts.
Good luck with your wheels.
Good luck with you, too. We'll race.
I think you're wet.
Thanks, Jess.
No, I'm talking after I get out.
Jess, I appreciate it. Thank you.
If you can still make it, we're going up to Roma.
Yes, we're gonna do this, so they're gonna...
Call it, but I thought we have to give her a date certain.
You know what I mean? Because the problem is, we have a seventy-two hour to post, even if we call a two-second meeting, since that's the...
Sorry.
I mean, we could always have an emergency meeting next week, anytime. Post this, boom, by the eleventh, because I'm not... You don't need me, because we gotta be...
They're gonna be upset.
You're gonna feel whatever, guys.
You know.
She didn't even turn around.
You could always adjourn the special town meeting to a date certain, too. I know that sucks, but if to keep the calendar right, you could always post for the fifth, if you need to postpone it till the following week.
I'm just concerned about what Ben was talking about, dueling articles. We can't press.
We didn't put forth a, I don't know, you talked about, I defer to you, because you, you don't have to, we're calling a special, we didn't call for what articles are on that market.
And they might land for Santa Maria.
Right.
So, I think we're fine.
Yeah, we have to, we have a special.
You could always have a special, special meeting, that's right.
Congratulations.
How bingo?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, she knows, tell her that we're not, we don't have a meeting scheduled for next year.
I thought the track?
Yes, the track. The track.
I, I think, it certainly is, it's, it's...
Only because when I grew up, I lived on Wood. Every Sunday, like bumblewee, or slowie, oh, yeah.
Yep, sounds good.
People were fighting, people were fighting.
How's it going?
Good.
Good.
I said, where's the whip?
That's right.
Because it's a repeater on your face.
That's okay. It's fine with me.
Sure.
I'll try to be on the town, too. I'm just saying, I don't know if you have to have a forum or selectmen, I cannot be there on the floor.
Right.
I'm going that whole week, maybe eleven. Be back the following week.
Right now, right now is primarily, uh, hopefully.
Did you get my email? Are you gonna address it tonight, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it on here?
I don't know, Carl says get it in.
If I don't, just, okay.
He was concerned about timing.
Here.
Pushing it out.
But the only thing is, too, Michelle says, the big weird...
The moderator is supposed to be back.
It's back in the morning. Okay. All right.
I guess that's, that's the pleasure.
But if we do, but if we do, um, so we shouldn't get the ball rolling unless we have a date.
Call for a future...
Okay, thank you. No, we'll be back. Motocross, come on up.
Would it be me?
Yeah, it'll be you, sir. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Lot of moving objects tonight.
I hear you two are infected, I'm staying down here.
Yeah.
The whole end is infected. Her nose.
Thank you. Thanks, Russ. Thank you very much for your time. Um, you got the schedule I sent out last week. Uh, no big surprises there, there's some events that we've dropped, some that we're adding. I'd like to tell you some of the things that we're adding. First of all, the National, of course, June twenty-ninth, locked in.
Locked in.
Locked in on that, uh, very important, but some things come up over the last year and a half or so, uh, you need to be aware of.
That's a nice picture.
Isn't it pretty?
Yeah.
Um, FELD is the promoting body of the Supercross, the indoor Supercross, where they're in stadiums. They're putting a big push on to extend their season that starts the first weekend of January, another twelve weeks.
You're kidding.
No. So, um, they did not get the attention of the factories, the OEMs, the first round, and the reason for it is, these factory riders get hurt at Supercross, they wanted to do it in Europe, but what would ultimately happen if they went out?
Wipe this out.
It wipes out the first half of the outdoor Nationals, and guess where we fall? All right, so we have to protect it. Now, the, the, the tact that they're taking right now is their grassroots of racing, which is a bunch of bull. We're the grassroots of racing. Do you know how many kids actually ever see a Supercross track indoors? Less than two percent of the riders that are out there that buy motorcycles. We've been the grassroots all along, but we've never told anybody because it's assumed.
Yeah.
Well, I can't assume it anymore. Now, all twelve national tracks have to go out of their way to bring in amateur events and amateur activities and gra, and, and grassroots opportunities to show that we are to the factories, the reason they sell motorcycles.
Right.
They don't sell motorcycles because of Supercross. That's the elite, the absolute elite that make millions of dollars every year for racing. So some of the events we've added here are for that reason. So the second event you see on there is the Loretta Lynn Amateur National Area Qualifier. We will have a two-day event in April, it would be on, um, Easter weekend, and that will be one of the efforts to show the grassroots of our national tracks taking care of the young kids. The one-twenty-five two-stroke is another, that is a, an amateur event that is done right in the middle of the National, in the, in the center of the day. And then we're going to have an amateur day the day before the National. I've worked with, I've talked to the Chief Anderson, I'm, I'm working with Chief, uh, Bishop right now on all the logistics of that, we're gonna add more detail to it to make sure that it runs smoothly, we've got to put a lot of fencing in, but it's very important, we were the only track in the Nationals that did not have an amateur day. So we have to, have to comply, and we worked out a lot of the details to make sure that happens.
So that'll be the day before the National?
That'll be the day before, exactly right, exactly right. Um, a new thing, pedals and pegs. We're gonna combine mountain bikes and motocross, which is a step towards what you're going to see going on worldwide right now, and the United States hasn't caught up, that's e-bikes, electric mountain bikes. It's monstrous, monstrous around the world, the United States is just picking up on it. We just acquired three from one of the top manufacturers in Germany to have on-site permanently as demos. We're gonna lead the pack.
Now I can do the rail trail.
Yeah. We're gonna be the first ones to do it, and we're, we're leading the country right now in that, so Keith has taken some good steps to make that happen. Every year, we do a deal with Kawasaki, we give their dealers the opportunity to come in and bring their, their customers in, to bring in their, 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 uh, friends and family and whatever, and we always receive from them equipment to work the track. Instead, this year, we're bringing in small bikes, small one-tens, one-forties. Keith is already the Northeast Director of the United States Motorcycle Coaching Association. It's driven by the, the industry leaders. We are doing a learn-to-ride, kids that have never been on bikes at all, not on the track, of course, it'll be in the parking lot, it'll be with cones, and it'll be with, with, uh, sit-down classroom, and there'll be three different stages of it. Keith is actually cutting out of his schedule right now, uh, every Wednesday afternoon to be able to work with these kids and be here as that coach, and Chris Canning, who is the reigning champion, will also go to, I think it's in Michigan, that he will go to attend the school to get that same accreditation that Keith has. So, again, grassroots, I've already talked to Chief Bishop about getting together with the local schools, getting together with the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, and offer that program to them that they have a grassroots way of bringing somebody in that's never ridden before, and it'll be just one more step to make us the leader.
What age group?
We're talking, you know, Keith has that, I think it's eight.
Wow.
I think eight years old is the bottom end, yeah. So that's why we get the little one-tens that have automatic transmissions, and then the one-forties that have shifting transmissions, and then there'll be three different levels. At the third level, they will experience the track, but in a very smooth layout, and give them the opportunity to pursue it, it's, it's kind of a tie-in with what Team Justice did over the years, and how that has produced some, some good, some good kids, I mean, it's some, yeah, great to see some scholarships that got given out a couple of weeks ago to Team Justice.
Right.
It's really, really good, so we're proud of that. We put together the Southwick Ambassadors Award, we're the only track in the Northeast that has done that, and we have pooled our resources with all of the suppliers of helmets, goggles, tires, chains, clothing, and we've thrown in money of our own, and we've chosen a rider who's not necessarily the fastest rider, not the points leader, but the one that represents the sport and the individual you would like to represent your track. Somebody who conducts themselves on and off the track properly, somebody who, who handles social media in a very positive way. This is our ambassador, and we've chosen the one, Chris Canning is the one for this year, because he fits that so perfectly. And then, it'll never be the same rider, two years in a row, we spread it around, and we're gonna do this to get these riders to embrace being the right kind of person out there and handle yourself properly. So that went over well. The Triple Crown that we did last year, uh, three-race series of our own, worked out great, the Northeast Vet Championship, we got huge following from that, and then the Kawasaki Demo Days. Excuse me, we're gonna be investing in the track and around the track, we're doing a new super VIP, very tiny, very small, it'll be at where the finish line used to be when the track went the wrong way. It'll be just a flattened area, we'll bring the, the tents in like we, you know, just for that day, excuse me. It'll be not just a perfect location to walk, watch, but they will have all access to the other VIPs as well. We can't bring more people into this track than we already have, it's higher than it's ever been before. We now have to trade them up a little bit and get them a better experience. But at the same time, we're also putting in the infrastructure that we can get the general public that are paying their normal fee to come in and get better areas to watch inside. We want to give and take on both sides, even it off a little bit. Because we are running more of our own events, and because we are running the Loretta Lynn Qualifiers and so forth, we need to purchase our own encoding, scoring, and transponder system. That's a healthy investment, it's one that, um, you know, it's, it's the only way we can do it. Uh, we're also doing a dedicated paddock water system, because we've been very fortunate that we have not had the, the, the weather so hot and dusty that we've had to really soak the track. If we did have to do that, and the factories are up there in the pits washing their bikes, something's gotta give. So I had a meeting with Charlie today about putting in another pump, and it'll be dedicated just for that, and primarily just for that day, but it'll, it'll make a big difference in the safety level of everything. Um, we have finished the track sprinkler system we worked on last year, we'll add another thousand feet of additional fencing, and, uh, we're gonna add more to the sound system. Just some of the pictures here on the next page, um, that's, this picture of the e-bike locations of some of the new things that we're doing on the track, uh, local guy winning the, the one-twenty-five race, our memberships, and the learn-to-ride. Uh, the affiliates have not changed an awful lot, um, MX Sports will now have not just the Pro National with us, but Amateur Day and the Loretta Lynn Qualifier. NESC, we have one more event than before, and one more event than any other track, because we always have the first and the last, and we always lose one because of weather. So they've given us five, hoping we get four, just like everybody else. Uh, we've gotten rid of a couple, we, we're not doing the Mud Fest now, um, we're not doing the ATVs, that's a declining business, plus when they bring in the side-by-sides, I can't buy insurance for it anymore. So we're dropping it. It never paid for itself, we tried, we tried to support it, we just can't do it anymore. So net, you'll have three fewer races than last year, but they're higher profile. Then in the non-racing events, they're virtually the same, the practice days, Kawasaki days, the stimelon practice days, the vintage guys, Masters of Minis, the same, Dunlop will be here one more time. We do have a, a new, uh, uh, non-race day, it's a Rip It For Ryan Scholarship, it's a young fellow that passed away, and, uh, we've given this family the track at our cost to put together an award to invite people in and raise money for a scholarship, that'll be in the fall. Then our WIC Family Day to help everybody, uh, thank everybody for helping us, and we will have twenty of those events versus twenty-three last season. We're gonna take some of the Wednesday afternoons, late afternoons that were Team Justice, and we're gonna do fewer Team Justice, uh, Wednesday nights, and we're gonna do more of the Learning Center, and we'll just trade off on that.
Right, and the Learning Center, you won't even hear.
I won't even open it there.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing is, on Team Justice... It never paid for itself, we tried, we tried to support it, we just can't do it anymore. So net, you'll have three fewer races than last year, but they're higher profile. Then in the non-racing events, they're virtually the same, the practice days, Kawasaki days, the stimelon practice days, the vintage guys, Masters of Minis, the same, Dunlop will be here one more time. We do have a, a new non-race day, it's a Rip It For Ryan Scholarship, it's a young fellow that passed away, and we've given this family the track at our cost to put together an event to invite people in and raise money for a scholarship. That'll be in the fall. Then our WIC Family Day to help everybody, thank everybody for helping us, and we will have 20 of those events versus 23 last season. We're gonna take some of the Wednesday afternoons, late afternoons that were Team Justice, and we're gonna do fewer Team Justice Wednesday nights, and we're gonna do more of the Learning Center, and we'll just trade off on that.
Right, and the Learning Center, you won't even hear.
I won't even open it there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is, on Team Justice Wednesday nights, we're gonna limit it to the days that I can actually physically be there.
Right.
I wanna make sure that it's in control. Word got out to too many people that Team Justice was there and invited themselves, so I'm gonna be there at least, and I can't, I can't leave it to Chief Bishop's people to be able to do it, it's not their responsibility, it's mine.
Yeah.
So, so we'll put blockages on the track safely, so that nobody will be inclined to go there without permission, and I will be there to supervise any Wednesday afternoon activities.
Any issues on Wednesdays? I don't think there was any.
Never, 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 but I wanna make sure there aren't.
Right, understood.
Just, just a step ahead, that's all. And basically, that's it. We, we have one more year already paid for, for the permit, this is paid for, I have in my hand the contract for the next three years. So we'll be signing that.
For the nationals.
Yeah. So, but I need to protect our position as the, the grassroots of amateur riding, and that's, that's my key focus right now, is to build that.
Yeah. Wonderful.
Any questions? Any concerns?
Sure.
Very good. We don't have a title sponsor, so if the town would like to cough up 30, $40,000 to support us...
For a thousand, for a thousand dollars, you can become the 250th anniversary sponsor of our parade.
And we do plan to be part of that.
Absolutely. Well, there is the platinum for 5,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, the platinum, I'm sorry.
All right, so the, so that, the ambassador's gonna get a little less money then.
Yeah, the ambassador, he can be in the parade. Yeah, he can be in the parade.
No, we certainly plan on being part of that. And as, as Russ and I were talking about a few weeks ago, I'm, I'm going through the same thing on the other end of my life, with Plymouth.
Oh, really?
Because we're going through the 400th anniversary.
I hear you guys get big money from the state, that's what I hear.
It's just like they came up to me and said, "We know that NBC pays you a million dollars to run that race, what are you worried about?"
Oh.
If they only knew I paid them.
Yeah, yeah, that wasn't...
Yeah, the perception, the perception. But yeah, no, we're gonna be part of it, we're gonna be in, involved in as much of the anniversary as we can. I don't know, that sounded like an awful lot of work for myself, so...
You're gonna be busy boy talk.
Yeah.
I have to go Rick, I was hoping to say hi, but I have to...
Yeah, he's leaving.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your support as always.
Have a good night, thanks for the update.
All right? Thank you.
Forty, just keep leaving. All right. Hey, we get back to town, we get a payroll warrant? Yes. 1-9-1-8 dated 2-4-19, and the amount of, mine's blank.
200 and 18 minutes, 7,512 cents, is that how you say that?
Yep. That's sad.
Very good.
All right. Regular session minutes for 12918.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Executive session minutes for 129. Are we doing anything here tonight?
I only see two topics, okay.
That's fine.
I'll share. No, we've got it.
The secretary should share.
I'm just reading it from afar. So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Employee handbook revision.
Make a motion to, for, to approve the second reading. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. So then I need a motion to approve? Or are we gonna put it off until the week?
No, we did, the second reading, that is approved.
All right, wonderful. So we keep you around Russ.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, authorize CAO approval for FY20 Veterans District Budget. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Employee Handbook Revision.
Make a motion to, for, to approve the second reading. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. So then I need a motion to approve? Or are we gonna put it off until the week?
No, we did, the second reading, that is approved.
All right, wonderful. So we keep you around Russ.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, authorize CAO approval for FY20 Veterans District Budget. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To accept the grant.
Yep, Southwick PD FY2019 State 9-1 State Training Grant Award.
That's a 10 grand, isn't it?
I don't have it here. Oh, I do, I'm sorry. Yep, $10,000, need a motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Old Business, update on 250th Anniversary?
We're having a get-together next Monday here in this room, the 11th at 6:30. We're inviting in businesses and civic groups.
Well, that's the Cheese and Crackers on Monday, huh?
And it's open to the public also.
Wonderful.
Just to kind of get people aware of what we're doing and the need for money.
All right. SPD Provisional Officer to Academy Update.
That's KP, right?
Yeah.
So she's...
Then we did a physical, went through...
Went through, she signed her offer, conditional offer of employment.
Yep.
So if she, she has to do one more thing and then they can provisionally appoint her...
Okay.
That's not the right word, pending her passing the academy, but we've extended that offer conditionally.
Understood. CPC North Pond and Allen Treatment Updates.
All good.
CRC Meeting for April 23rd, 19.
Good luck.
I guess we'll see who's left standing for that, that'll be a nice meeting hopefully.
Fire chief's here, he'd like to go.
Yeah. I'll go, I don't...
He might have to put us out.
Yeah, it's all good.
Yeah.
Old Cemetery Water Line, I saw some people in there.
Yeah, Randy gave either the cost of putting it in, okay, and putting in the pit and the meter, and having a permanent water supply there.
Right.
Or working on something with Bobby Johnson, or renting a water truck.
Water truck for $210 a day.
I, I'd like to just ask the Cemetery Commission...
Can we park?
To kind of turn it over to them, to ask them for a recommendation.
Okay.
You know?
Well, Carl will do that.
Because it's, it's really, we were just asking.
No, I know, I know.
I don't want to step on their toes.
All right, Lakeview Village Sewers.
I think that's...
That's just to continue it, to continue.
Just continuing to hear back from that.
Any, you guys have anything else for Old Business that we'd like to discuss?
Not either.
Neither one of them. All righty. Under New Business, I have the fire truck supplemental funding. Chief?
Yep.
Yep. What's up buddy? I didn't honestly open the email.
I couldn't call it supplemental, but sort of.
No, understood, yeah.
So just, Carl wanted me to get it in front of you, with your timelines that you have going on. So, year ago, we, we budgeted the 1.2 million.
How much were you off by?
10-ish, 10 to 15,000.
Okay.
But, so what happened was, when we went out with our RFPs, we purposely didn't put the trade-in in the RFP, because they just give you a token, here's your money, but up the price.
Right, right.
Everyone bought a used car.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So our thought was that we would sell them afterwards and have that access to that money.
Right.
However, this morning, Tom Scanlon said that we can't do that, that they've set up an article that Carl has to put that into the general fund, anything he sells.
True, that is true, yes.
So what Carl suggested was that we go for a supplemental that'll be backfilled later when we sell the vehicles a year later.
Right, right.
So, I don't know what the timeline is, I don't know the process, but he wanted me to get it in front of you with the, everything that's moving so...
Apparently we have a special town meeting coming up.
That's all you're running rough, yeah.
Right.
So it really isn't an increase, it's just trying to take advantage of the, the trade-in values that we didn't get due to technicalities.
Right. All right, so...
So I'll make a motion to approve an article be drafted for $15,000?
Max.
To supplement the fire department purchase of... Purchase of, purchase, and Carl will, with legal counsel, word of correction.
Right.
Second? I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And obviously so...
How's that coming along?
Great, I mean, ladder trucks should be here in July.
Red?
Yep. And then some of what this, some of this does is, is whether we go with which chassis we select.
Right.
And do we go with a Ford, and do we increase it to an international, international freightliner to get it more of a truck?
Right.